Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's August 15th, 2023 City Council meeting. I'd like to respectfully ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Mayor Pro Tem Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Please join me, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a city, and further the bonds of our community. Be with our staff as they continue to strive to provide the highest level of services possible to our citizens. And finally, be with the residents of Maui during this unbelievable fire and natural disaster there, where we only wonder what the final results of that will be. I think prayers for all the people who live there and families are needed by everyone. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you, your duty, to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential complaints concerning tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of minutes, July 17th, 2023 work session, and July 18th, 2023 City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is a request for additions to the consent agenda. Those would be Item E, Downtown Burlington Social District Ordinance and City Code of Ordinance Amendment; Item F, cancellation of September 5th, 2023 City Council meeting; Item G, Link Transit Fleet Replacement Plan Modification and Budget Amendment 2024-06; Item H, Paramount Expansion Project Budget Amendment 2024-07. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for items to the consent agenda. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda with the additions. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the following temporary street closing request and proposed extension of premises in a designated area for the Recreation and Parks Phoenix Fourth Fridays Special Event in Downtown Burlington from 2:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. on September 22nd, 2023. Front Street from Worth Street to Spring Street; Main Street from Davis Street to Front Street. Item B, to adopt a resolution to participate in the North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Assets Security System and approve an interlocal joint agreement between the City of Burlington, North Carolina Cooperative Liquid Asset Security Systems, authorizing the mayor, city attorney, city clerk, and the chief finance officer to execute the contracts, as well as authorize the city manager, chief finance officer, and the accounting treasury manager as signers on all of the accounts. Item C, to approve the Master Services On-Site Generation Service Agreement between the City of Burlington and Duke Energy One Incorporated for Duke Energy to provide and maintain an on-site backup power system at the J.D. McIntosh Jr. Water Treatment Plant to replace the existing backup generator contingent upon legal and Finance Department approval. Item D, to approve a lease agreement between the City of Burlington and Leaf Capital Funding LLC for the replacement of 159 out-of-warranty semi-rugged laptops at the Burlington Police Department. Item E, to adopt a social district ordinance for downtown Burlington and adopt proposed amendments to Burlington City Code of Ordinance, Chapter 4, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 1, Public Property, Section 4-1, Consumption on Public Property. Item F, to cancel the September 5th City Council meeting, September 5th, 2023 City Council meeting. Item G, to approve proposed modifications to the Link Transit Fleet Replacement Plan and approve associated budget amendment 2024-06 for allocation to the Transit Capital Fund. And Item H, to approve budget amendment 2024-07 for the design costs for the Paramount Expansion Project. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. Public hearing number one. Item one on the agenda of public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone property from Heavy Industrial HI and General Business GB to Planned Development PD. The property is located on the block bounded by East Webb Avenue, Johnson Street, East Davis Street, and Everett Street, addressed as Zero East Webb Avenue, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 136857. At this time, we'll recognize Planning Director Jamie Lawson.
Good evening. I'm here tonight very briefly. The applicant has requested for this matter to be carried to the September 19th public hearing date, and is in the audience in case you have any questions. So we would not need to notice further should that be continued.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions for the petitioner, or is there a motion for continuance on item one?
I'll make that motion to be continued.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the continuance of item one. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Item two under public hearings, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel of land which is contiguous to its current city limits and addressed as Zero Elrato Street. The parcel is approximately 5.11 acres in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 139850. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie once again.
Thank you. So we received a utility request that was initiated by the property owner for a water and sewer connection to serve one residential unit. As you recall, this was discussed with you at the July 17th work session. Associated with the utility request, there was an annexation agreement that was received and certified. As you can see on this map, the property is contiguous to existing city limits to the south. So staff is recommending annexation for this property. You have in your packet an ordinance for your consideration, and the property, the matter has been properly advertised. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jamie concerning item two? Okay, good. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments on item two. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Hearing done. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
It's moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll call for questions, or we'll entertain a motion for item two. There is no consistent-
... annexation ordinance for the contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel located at Zero Elrato Street.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on, item three. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel of land which is contiguous to current city limits, addressed as 619 Spence Street. The parcel is approximately 0.78 acres in size and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 125911. Once again.
Yes, thank you. This is very similar to the other request and also discussed with you at your July 17th work session. There was a utility request for water and sewer to serve an existing residential use. Associated with that was an annexation agreement that was received and certified. Again, this property is contiguous to existing city limits to the south. So as a result, staff is recommending annexation. And again, you've got an ordinance for consideration, and it has also been properly advertised. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Questions for Jamie on item three? Once again, this is a public hearing, so we'll open the floor for public comments at this time. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item three? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on item three? Hearing done. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or any discussions? If not, we'll entertain a motion on the adoption.
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the annexation ordinance with the contiguous voluntary annexation of a parcel located at 619 Spence Street, effective at midnight on August 15th, 2023.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item four. A public hearing has been scheduled to consider a voluntary annexation petition to annex into the City of Burlington a parcel of land which is approximately 0.49 acres in size, addressed as 623 Spence Street, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 125904. The property is currently not contiguous to the existing city limits. However, the adjacent lot at 619 Spence Street has also been approved for a utility connection and has also petitioned for annexation. Should that property be annexed, this property would become contiguous. At this time, we'll recognize Jamie again.
Thank you. I think you summarized it there. So this property is, would now be contiguous since the adjacent property, 619, was recommended and approved for annexation. So as a result, staff is also recommending annexation for this property here, and you've got an ordinance in your packet for consideration as well.
So this is a separate request. Any other questions for Jamie on this? This is a separate request, so we'll open the floor for public comments on this item as well. So is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on item four? Anyone on this side? Hearing done. We'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, if there are no questions or additional discussions, we'll request a motion on item four.
... about the annexation ordinance for a parcel located at 623 Spence Street, effective at midnight on August 15th.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That concludes our public hearings. At this time, we will move to new business. Under new business, thank you, Jamie, under new business, item five, City Council will consider temporarily closing the following streets during the Walk to End Alzheimer's Special Event on Saturday, September 30th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special events permit application process. The streets in question are East Front Street from Spring Street to Worth Street, and South Main Street from Front Street to Davis Street. At this time, we'll recognize Special Events Supervisor Sean Kaviria. Sean?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Council. Like you mentioned, we are requesting on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association for their longstanding event in downtown Burlington, the Walk to End Alzheimer's. That event is scheduled to take place on September 30th of 2023. Like you mentioned, we are looking to close East Front Street from Spring to Worth, and South Main from Front to Davis. The event will kick off at 9:00 a.m. and conclude by 12:00 p.m. We do have a member from the Alzheimer's Association, Ms. Samantha Loy. If you have any questions specific to the event, or if it's something I can answer, I'd be happy to. If you have any questions.
Any questions or discussion about this event?
How many years is this going to last?
How many years?
I mean, I've been part of it for more than eight years, so.
I was gonna say, I know it's several years. I don't know exactly how long, but we might need to start keeping track.
Yeah, that might be a good one.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, any other questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion for this request.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with that. Moving on, item six, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3, the city attorney will report on the execution of the settlement agreement with the Hall River Assembly pertaining to its PFAS and PFOS contaminants claim with the city, and will request the agreement be entered into the City Council's August 15th, 2023 meeting minutes. At this time, we'll recognize our wonderful city attorney, David Huffman.
It's like delivering the newspaper two weeks later. You, of course, recognize that the press has already had this information. That agreement that you instructed the legal department to go with was executed on August 1st with the Hall River Assembly. And under the state statute regarding open meetings, 143-31811A3, it requires that we report that to you as soon as practical. You didn't have a meeting first in the month, so we're reporting to you now and would ask that you include the whole amendment in full length in the minutes.
Any questions or comments concerning this item?
No. Good work.
Absolutely.
Very good press for the state. I hope people feel satisfied that we're doing everything we can.
Yeah, I want to congratulate Bob Patterson's team, and certainly all the city staff that was involved in that, and David Huffman. We've been working on this since 2019. So obviously, our legal team was acutely involved. City Council was acutely involved, and everyone should be very proud of this step. And we obviously have work to do, so we'll continue to do in that. But there was an article that was published shortly after the announcement, and I want to read a quote in bold from the article. "The City of Burlington has reached an agreement to prevent a huge amount of forever chemicals from getting into the Hall River. That change will also impact the Cape Fear watershed, and it's a cutting-edge change compared to cities across the country. That's the significance of the body of work from this organization." And I think everybody needs a round of applause on that.
Mr. Mayor, also, you mentioned earlier, but the leadership of Bob Pastor and his staff and the complexity of this cannot be underestimated. This is, this was no easy task.
Well, Bob got national recognition. He gets phone calls from all over the country now.
We have had some calls from other parts of the country.
Not just here, believe me, but Bob, to all your people, just a great job.
Definitely a team effort.
Thanks to everyone. Any other comments concerning this item? If not, we'll entertain a motion as requested.
Make a motion. We enter to the agreement and make it part of the minutes of the City Council meeting.
We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thanks to everyone again for your help on that. Our next item is unfinished business, item seven. City Council will consider a proposed slate of appointments to the advisory boards and commissions. We discussed this last night at the work session, so at this time, we'll recognize John Burke.
Mayor, Council, I believe that there was a slate decided on last night, and I think that there's some actions on your agenda that we can take, and I can answer any questions if you have any in the meantime.
So the request is for the Burlington Housing Authority, new appointment of Brittany Brown, the Public Transit Advisory Commission, PTAC, new appointment of William Blake Slaughter, and Tree and Appearance Commission, new appointment of Ellen Ritter. Any discussion on this? If not, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the proposed slate of appointments.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, John, for keeping us moving forward on that. Our next item is a staff report. The Milken Institute of High Performing Cities is going to be presented by our Economic Development Director, Peter Bishop. Peter, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to be here, and members of council. Pleasure to be back. I was very thankful for council and the manager and our leadership's approval of parental leave. For those of you who don't know, I have a two-month-old baby boy that we welcomed at ARMC, so really enjoyed that time with baby and mother, so thank you very much for that opportunity. But like we shared earlier with the settlement with the Hall River, I think some good news to share with City Council and a lot of enjoying the fruits of your labor, maybe stopping to smell the roses for just a moment with some recognition. As the mayor mentioned, the Milken Institute, a nonprofit think tank that tracks government and its impact on people and businesses, provide an annual report, and they look at what are the best performing cities in the country. And Burlington was ranked in the top 15 of best performing cities in the country in 2023, actually number 14 out of 203. So right at the very top and the top tier of cities. And I think that Hall River Assembly's settlement is a great example of us being a high-performing city, identifying a creative and novel solution, partnering with other stakeholders impacted by what's happening with the situation, and getting to a very positive result that's new, that's changing, that's drawing attention from around the country and possibly around the world. So what Milken has identified is two things. They looked at a time series of four, five years of performance for our economy, and then a year-to-year, and in both measures, the city did very well. We've seen significant, you know, 36% wage increase since 2016 for our workers, and even year-to-year, that's increased significantly. So for example, last year, the same employee is making $117 more per week this year than they were last year, and, you know, over 30% more than six years ago. And that's, that's not a small amount of money. That's outpacing inflation. So through the economic growth that has happened in Burlington and some of the job creation that we've experienced here, and some of that wage growth, our citizens are better off, our businesses are better off. So this ranking is a validation of the intentional investments that City Council, that our leadership have made in economic development, but in a lot of other things, because you don't really invest directly in economic development. You invest in infrastructure. You invest in workforce. You invest in small business support. You invest in water, sewer, those type of things, and that creates the economic development that you want to see within a community. In addition to this ranking, we've also experienced great population growth. 3.5% from last year to this year, that's the top growth rate in all the Piedmont Tribe communities within our region, and 18.6% since the 2010 census. So significant growth. People are coming to Burlington. People are choosing Burlington as a location for their lives and for their business. And why are they doing that? Why are we seeing these rankings? Why are things improving? What is the labor that has created this fruit? Well, it's investments in workforce and infrastructure. So seeing a new biotechnology center of excellence built at Alamance Community College to foster and increase our life sciences industries in the city. Doing more infrastructure projects, as you see as evidenced by a grant we won from the U.S. Economic Development Administration to expand sewer, by projects we're doing to expand water and sewer near the airport and some of our industrial properties through some state appropriations. And then, of course, we were all a part of the Lumos Fiber Expansion announcement just recently that's going to add even more high-speed internet opportunities for our small business owners, for entrepreneurs, and for our residents within the city. So infrastructure helps bring that growth. And then projects come when you invest in infrastructure in site readiness, in some of the things that our council and our leadership has. So we have an Alamance Food Expansion and a Steritech Expansion that are just finishing their development approvals will be under construction very shortly. One of those is a $42 million project with 260 jobs, the other 50 jobs and $71 million. Under construction is a $71 million expansion to LabCorp's aviation facilities. And one of the oldest existing mills in Burlington is in the process of renovation by a furniture manufacturer that we awarded and partnered with the Building Reuse Program a little over a year ago. So the projects and the investments and the decisions that this council has made over time are bearing real fruit in job creating and investment projects. When you make those investments, you also tend to make the headlines. This is just one publication over the last six months of some of the headlines that have been here on Burlington, the direct result of the activities of our staff and our leadership in allocating projects and making, investing in infrastructure and in quality of life improvements a priority. So we're, you know, we're cracking that top ranking. We're seeing those strong wage increases. We're seeing projects come to the City of Burlington to create jobs, and we're being awarded. The City of Burlington and the Alamance Chamber received the Best Mid-Market Project Award from my Economic Development Association, NCEDA, this summer for the Steritech project. So when you, when you do good things over time, you get recognized through some of these headlines, through some of this recognition. But I think what's most important, and Bob said it very well just a moment ago, those are really recognitions of the people that are doing all this work, of our city council making decisions, of our police and fire who are keeping us safe and well, of, that's a Public Works luncheon, Gary and his staff, some engineering staff there. None of these projects that I referenced happen by the Economic Development Department getting it done. It's the engineering department, it's our planning department, it's all these steps that we take through these community projects. It's the decisions that you make at budget time to empower these decisions to happen, and the advocacy that we put before to our federal and state representatives. So really, it's probably time for another round of applause for our city council, for our staff for making these great rankings happen, and for helping push Burlington forward.
Let's do that.
So it's certainly my pleasure and honor to present this information to you, but the credit goes to our leadership, to all of our staff, and really to, not pictured here, to our residents and businesses who are taking advantage, who are coming, who are choosing Burlington because of the great things, because of the high-performing city that we are. Certainly take any of your questions if you have.
Excellent report. Any questions for Peter?
Lastly, I'd also, I think the respect for public safety, the investment we've made in police, the investment we continue to make with fire.
in the police, the investment we continue to make with fire, is underappreciated until it's needed. And I think that's, that's been substantial improvement. And also, I think the investment into the park system. Move your children, there, there need things to do. We need to always partner with our school system, both public and private for that matter. But this is a community effort, not just the city or the county. It's a combination of both, and I think we need that in mind as, as we, as we go forward. This is a wonderful opportunity. Just take the corridor now from, really, you can take it all the way to Hickory, but you can certainly take it to Kernsville to the west, and then you take it to the east, what used to be to Raleigh, and now it's to Holly Springs, it's to Clayton. This is a substantial growth of people, and it's a good place to live.
Any other comments?
Just to say, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. And also, I, I hear you giving credit to everybody else, and I appreciate that, but you've also been very big part of this picture. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna take credit. We hired somebody who is really doing a good job for us, and it's not unnoticed, and if anybody poaches you on it, please.
Well, grateful for that. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. How many years, Peter?
Seven, in November. Seven years.
If you think about it, this, to Kathy's point, the initiative to branch out and create a department, you had to have vision down the road, and it's taken us a while. We've worked on it and created pathways and avenues and built relationships, and now we're starting to see a lot of that really come to fruition and agreed. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Peter. Excellent, excellent report. At this time, we'll move into public comments. There are no public comments, that's right?
No.
No, no requested. So we'll move to council comments. I do have a, a couple of council comments. One is, Kim and I had the pleasure of attending the Junior Police Academy Class of two thousand twenty-three graduation. That was at the end of July. Want to really thank BPD, their efforts to, to make that event a great success as long, along with all the other agencies in the county. But once again, we got us a nice, beautiful plaque of this year's cadets graduating that we'll put in our council office. So a lot of work goes into that, and I'm going to tell you, it is one of the most inspiring events that, that you can attend. And just to see the effort that our team and the local agencies put forth for these young men and women, it's just pretty phenomenal. So congratulations to our folks that were involved in that. Obviously, we had our National Night Out, August first, which took the place of our council meeting. I'd like to thank our police, fire, and other team members for really such a strong showing. A lot of the places that I went around this year had record turnouts. I know at Crump Village, BHA, there were, had to be several thousand people there. And Dream Center, kind of the same. Glen Raven was pretty phenomenal. We bounced around. The chief, Chief Baylock and I got to go speak to the Williams High School football team. That was fun. We got to swing by there and see them. So really good job to everyone for just the amount of community support. It's just the best I can remember. I'd also like to congratulate the Burlington Fire Department on the graduates of the one hundred and twelfth and one hundred and thirteenth recruit class. We did that on August fourth, so I actually, very proud to attend. I got to sit on stage with Craig and Beverly, so I was honored to do that. Having been a fireman at one point in my life, I was very proud to sit up there and look at that group of graduates. Really, really good-looking group. And then Fourth Fridays is coming up. That's August twenty-fifth, is that right? Don't we have a Fourth Fridays event? Does anybody know?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thought so. And then, that's, and then there's, the last one is in September. That's the Phoenix. Which we just, yeah, just approved. One quick comment, just a brief Western Electric update. We, obviously, we've worked tirelessly on this project, the cleanup project, and finally, about a month ago, we did receive the, I guess, the Army's report on the steps they're going to take to clean up the site. I guess it has to be approved by the state, is that right? State has to weigh in on that? That's correct. We're going to leverage some outside resources to take this catalog of documents and pare it down into a very condensed version in layman terms, so everyone will have the opportunity to really look at that and see it, everyone, the public. We can then post that so that everyone can see just in a very simple format what's going to be taking place out there. But it's definitely, the, the project is identified as entering into a cleanup state, and we've got someone working on that now.
We do, yes, sir.
So hopefully, maybe by our next meeting, we'll have all that wrapped up. And then a welcome to our interim fire chief, Kim Briscoe, sitting in the back. Mr. Briscoe, thank you for being here, chief. We met him last night, and I do want to welcome, I noticed one of our county commissioners, Craig Turner, slid in on us to spy on, on success. What a great meeting for him to be in. And just a quick reminder, as you heard tonight, there will be no meeting Tuesday, September fifth. Our next meeting will be on September nineteenth. Any other council comments?
I think it's only appropriate to, to, to really speak on this Western Electric thing and, and give the mayor a lot of credit, because he's, he's taken the leadership on this, and it's not been, it's not been an easy road. It's been a lot of ups and downs, a lot of downs in the beginning, but I think being consistent and persistent has made a difference in some, some positive results coming forward. I can solve all the issues for sure, but it certainly is a, is a solid start to get into, to make that area what it should be for the people who live in that community and for the entire city for that matter.
I'd like to echo those remarks, because that's one of the most frequently mentioned items, is what are you going to do with Western Electric? And there've been several efforts, but there, I sincerely appreciate you moving that along. I think you're right on the edge of seeing some results. Thanks to you and of course, obviously, council's here to do what is necessary to do that along as well. But again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other council comments? If not, we will-
I can give an invitation, Mayor, if you don't mind. The inclusive playground that we're putting in the city parks, the install will be Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. There's a ribbon cutting at three thirty on Wednesday. I'm sure everybody's talked to you about that, but you're all invited to that. And this is a sponsored program with Blue Cross Blue Shield of North Carolina, Zobane Thunder, and Kaboom, that's a playground company, and we're very proud to get this installed.
And I think they've recruited some local businesses to help out.
Yes, sir. A lot of local volunteers, city clubs and, and businesses, and Blue Cross Blue Shield's bringing one hundred and twenty-five volunteers.
How about that? That's great, and I think we do have that information from Beverly, so thank you. Any, anything else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?